Well, good evening all. I'd like to call the order of the City of Lathrow Village City Council meeting. And in accordance with PA 254 of 2020, the members should identify their physical location by stating the county, city, township, or village and state from which he or she is attending the meeting remotely. Roll call please.
Roll call. Councilmember Ferguson.
Lathrow Village, Oakland County.
Mayor Garrett.
Here in Lathrow Village, Oakland, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Councilmember Saviki.
Here, Lathrow Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
And Councilmember Stallings. Mayor Garrett, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I invite everyone to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before the approval of an agenda, anyone like to make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Stallings?
Make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Stallings.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Can we have a roll call on the vote, please?
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Saviki.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any presentations, so we will adjourn the city council and rejoin as the zoning board of appeals. Madam Clerk, do we have to say the, we don't have to do where we're at again because we're calling to order the ZBA, right?
Right. I just need a roll call.
Technically, it's a separate meeting, so.
Yes.
Oh, do you?
Sorry.
Alright, that's okay. Alright, so, roll call for the zoning board of appeals. Mayor Garrett.
Here, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Councilmember Saviki.
Here, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Councilmember Stallings. And Councilmember Ferguson.
Here, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Okay, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I get someone to approve the ZBA minutes from February 22nd, 2021?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 22nd, 2021.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Saviki.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
And Council and Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing for 27,000 Southfield Road. The zoning board of appeals for the city's Lathrow Village will hold a public hearing on an appeal filed by Joseph Wester Bake, PE engineer for property owner at 27,000 Southfield Road, Lathrow Village, Michigan, 48076, to make a determination whether or not conforming lot should be classified as a special nonconforming use, either Class A or Class B under Section 7-8 got 11 of the City of Lathrow Village zoning ordinance.
Would you like me to give a little overview of this present of this project?
That'd be great.
Alright, so as you mentioned, this project is located at the corner of 11 Mile and Southfield Road. It's currently used as a discount tire, which has been there for a number of years. Discount tires, you may know or may not realize, is comprised of several parcels. So, the two that are along Southfield Road, as well as one of them that is on 11 Mile are, well, the two on Southfield Road are zone commercial vehicular, and the one on 11 Mile is zone mixed use. However, there is another lot that's adjacent to the alley on the east that's actually zone single-family residential. So, they have used this site for a number of years as a parking area, with a number of cars there as well as their dumpster location. So, that isn't super permitted use in this district, right, for this particular situation? So, it is considered a nonconforming use. The applicant discount tire is proposing to do some reconfiguration on the site, use that lot that's the northernmost parcel along Southfield Road and Sunny Brook for some additional loading area, and then more fully develop that parking lot and put a proper dumpster enclosure there as well. They are also proposing to install a masonry screen wall along that eastern property line, and they have a small addition, all of which would go to the planning commission if the zoning board of appeals considers this to be a Class B nonconforming use. So, it's one of the interesting things about the city zoning ordinance is that it has two classes of nonconformities. And you may know, nonconformities are those things that have been determined over a number of years to, hopefully eventually go away, because there are things that we don't necessarily want in the districts which they're located. So typically, nonconforming uses aren't allowed to get more intense or expand. Nonconforming structures may or may not be able to be expanded. But in this case, we have two classes. So, one class, Class A, says this is absolutely the worst thing, and we really don't want to keep it here. It's offensive, it's ruining the value of nearby properties, and so, we don't want it to be expanded. It's not, we're not saying that we have to get rid of it right now, but over time, the hope is that those uses will go away. The Class B nonconformities are things that we wouldn't necessarily want in the area, but we're not finding them to be extremely problematic, that with proper design, they might be able to be expanded or used in a different way that helps minimize their, any issues, any external impacts on neighboring properties. And so, this particular use has been there for many years, that, and they're largely on property that they are zoned to use. It's just this little parking area that's zone residential, but that has been in operation for several years, many years. I don't know really how long it's been there, but a number of years. And their proposed improvements would, we think that this may better accommodate the vehicles that are on the site. We know that there is some issue with some of the traffic circulation on the site, with the vehicles coming and going for service, as well as for delivery vehicles coming and going to deliver and take away product. And so, the applicant is requesting that the ZBA consider this to be Class B nonconformity. If that were the case, and that ZBA did decide this, it would be considered to be a special land use. So, they will have to submit a site plan to the planning commission. Planning commission will again hold a public hearing on that special land use request, which would be the expansion, not expansion, but reconfiguration of the lot, including paving the parking area. And then it comes back to you as city council for final action on that. So that is a general overview. I think that the applicant is here as well, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have of me before that.
Alright, I must be losing my batteries in my mouth, so.
Oh.
Get off of mute.
No problem.
Does anyone have any questions about this?
Looks pretty straightforward.
Um. I did have, and I'm sorry if you might have said this also. Do we hear anything back from, or anything from the, who's the picture, resident that is east of the?
Mr. Batzalver?
Yes, I've spoken to him, explained the general plan for, given basically the same overview that Jill just gave you. I'm explaining to him what discount tires is proposing to do. He's generally supportive. I mean, he didn't see, he didn't seem to have any issues with what I described was going to be happening tonight. And I will be meeting with him once they've submitted their full site plan review package, so he can see the, see the plans as, as they've been designed, so.
Yeah, I would guess that this improvement would actually mitigate some of the issues that he's had over time, because he's gonna, he will have now have a masonry wall, which will isolate him from the dumpster and the, and the animals that get into it. He won't have to see the trash. Yeah.
He was quite pleased that there was going to be somewhere to store, inside to store the dead tires, so that, that seemed to make him happy, so.
Alright, well, thank you. Anyone else? So, I'm looking at this agenda, and I guess we're doing each one of them separately? Or is, it's all for the same location, right?
You just have the one request before you, which is the determination of whether it's a Class A or Class B nonconformity.
Gotcha.
There's just a few additional attachments, so you have the whole packet. That's all.
Okay, because the way, it just looks like it's like three different things. That's why I got a little like, we're talking about one location.
One location. Just multiple pages to their packet, that's all.
Thank you. Okay.
They have included their plans that they will be submitting to the planning commission, just so that you can see what it is that they're proposing.
Alright, okay. So then, okay, does anyone have any questions, concerns, discussion?
We need a motion, correct?
Well, first you gotta open up the public hearing and see if there's any public comment.
Yeah.
And the applicant is here as well.
Um, you know, I'm somebody that reads my agenda. There's no place to tell me where to go next, except adjourned, so I'm just like, okay, somebody jump in there. So yeah, so there's any public comment. Is it Mr. Wester?
Yep, yep, I'm here.
Um, is there anything that you would like to speak about? Say.
I don't think so. I think Jill did a great job summarizing our plans on the site. And yeah, I'm happy to answer any other questions. I also have, I don't know if I can do it or not, but I can share my screen if you guys would like to see anything as well. But I think Jill already did a great job running through everything that we're planning to do on the site.
Okay, well, thank you. Is there anyone else that's an attendee that would like to give their voice, their opinion?
A proposed site, obviously you're gonna have to move a few telephone poles. Is there, I mean, are you still, do you have to work with Jill to coordinate that? Or how, how do you, how do you go about getting to the next step on that?
Yeah. The plan is to coordinate with the power company to determine if we can have some of those guy wires relocated or removed completely. We could possibly keep some of the poles there yet, as long as we can get rid of the guy wires and provide some kind of bollards around them to protect vehicles from hitting them, obviously. But that's still coordination that needs to happen.
Yeah, that'll, that'll go to the, the, the site plan. It'll go to the planning commission. We'll look at those kinds of things here.
Okay, and you do plan on putting up a masonry wall to separate the R1 from your location, right?
Correct, yep. Six feet tall on the east side of the site, and then transitioning to a three-foot wall that will wrap around the north side of the parking area as well.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
Yep.
So, Scott, help me with this one. Are we doing the motion now, even though?
Yeah, you can close the public hearing and then take, entertain a motion to make a determination.
Okay, so we're gonna close the.
Just a question, just a question too. So, when we close, we're gonna determine A or B, correct? Is that, is that what we're, that's the next step?
Correct, yeah, that's, that's the question of the night, so. Okay, thanks.
So I'm gonna close the public hearing of the ZBA, and then, I'm really struggling right now to figure out what I'm, probably, if no one can tell this yet. I just am saying that, am I adjourning the ZBA completely? Are we doing the motion now?
Close, close the public hearing and then.
Yeah, alright, so I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to classify the property at 27,000 Southfield Road as, as a Class B nonconformity.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Roll call. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Board Member Saviki.
Sorry, yes.
Board Member Ferguson.
Yes.
Board Member Garrett.
Yes.
And Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. And I think that is all that we need to do, so I will adjourn the ZBA and re-go back to the City of Lathrow Village City Council. I should have printed out my packet. I should not have done all of this. It is confusing. Maybe I have to be like Bruce. Okay, do we have to do a roll call again?
You can do, roll call on the motion, but you don't have to announce where you are.
Thank you. Okay, roll call for us adjourning back to, I mean, coming back to the city council.
We gotta have the motion first. Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to close the, the, the ZBA meeting and to reopen as city council.
Second.
Great.
It's been moved. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Roll call would be Board Member Ferguson.
Present Oakland County.
No, to go back into city council, adjourn as ZBA.
Yes.
Board Member Garrett.
Yes.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
And Board Member Saviki.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Wow, so confusing.
It is, and so, I'm sorry, it is just, okay, so we're going back into the city council. That was, the question was, you have to do another roll call going back into city council? No, okay, great, so let's move on and go into the consent agenda. Thank you, city manager, for putting the agenda in the chat. I have it, that's not the issue. It's trying to click on the links to hurry back to where you were at before, that's all. So, consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the city council and will be approved by one motion. This will include the minutes from the city council study session, March 15th, 2021, the minutes from city council regular meeting, March 15th, 2021, minutes from city council goal-setting meeting, March 30th, 2021, and minutes from city council study session, April 5th, 2021, and then last, a set budget hearing fiscal year 2021, 22, and capital improvement plan for 2021 through 26, from May 17th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Who would like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Saviki.
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted.
Thank you. Next, we have the dispersment reports, but I don't have anything right there.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the dispersment report for $579,785.73, which is comprised of multiple funds, the general fund at 200, roughly $260,000, major road fund at $10,300, local road at $84,000, capital fund at $2,000, the DDA dispersment at $55,000, and the water and sewer department at about $168,000, again, for a total of $579,785.73.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just a quick question on the dispersment report. I think it's on page one of seven, where it says postal refill for $1,500. I think it is on page one of seven.
Ian, that's refilling our postage machine.
Okay, I kinda suspected that. I just didn't know what that was. What about the, the transfer switch for 2014-1662?
That was a generator repair.
Okay. And um, just, just an observation on the Main Street programs. So, not sure what those programs are, but we have food associated with that. Is there any way we could maybe get more details on, behind those?
On the Main Street?
Yeah.
What page are you?
Page is that?
Uh, that's page, I think it's seven of eight or something. Let me, let me just scroll down a little, sorry.
We're at seven? No.
Yeah. Uh. It's there somewhere. My mistake. I didn't write that page down.
On page, page four, page 48 in the middle.
Forty-eight, okay, yes. Thank you. Is there a way we could get a better level of detail in these reports?
Well, what it is, is if it's on the credit card, it's very hard to break it out, because we only get so much room on the credit card. And when multiple people are putting things on the credit card, we can only pick and choose. And actually, I was teaching somebody how to do accounts payable, so that's probably why that got put on there that way.
Okay. Alright, thank you. That's all for me.
Are you, are you, Ian, are you referring to the restaurant reimbursements? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm looking, yeah.
Yeah.
Those were from grants. Those are grants.
The city, the TDA was awarded, that we were awarded about $30,000 in total, specifically for restaurants through Oakland County's weatherization program. So we had, we had kebab kebab, Helenic and Jagged Fork apply for those grant funds. And so.
Now I get it.
Were awarded a total of $10,000 in grant funding with two dispersments of up to $5,000, up to $5,000 per dispersment. I think kebab kebabs was a little bit lower, and so was Helenic. And then they can still make up the rest of that balance, so.
Okay, yeah, at, yeah, at a glance, it just looked like we paid that. So I, I was just trying to get explanations, but thank you for clarifying that, because it was not clear.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yeah.
I was a little confused.
Yeah.
We'll see another dispersment like that coming up here in the next few weeks. We just got the remainder of the grant funds from Oakland County, so we'll be submitting checks. We'll have another check request.
I know, I was, I was a little shocked. I'm like, man, those numbers and where'd all the food go?
Eat it all.
Okay.
That was a big party that I missed out on.
Yeah, exactly.
You mean, you didn't get your food delivered, Ian?
No, I didn't. But thanks for the clarification.
So we received the grant funds then, right Pam, and then we dispersed it out to these restaurants. That's what happened.
Correct.
Yeah, remember, this is a dis, this is a dispersment report, so we don't see the revenue coming in. We're just seeing all the expenditures going out, so that we can ask these kinds of questions. So it's, sometimes it's weird like that.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Roll call. Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Saviki.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we have departmental report.
Make a motion to approve the department reports.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion on any of the reports?
I just want to mention to you that Rami has started doing a monthly update that kind of outlines some of the work that he's doing throughout the community, and that's included in your packet on page 82 and 83 and 84 for February and March.
Yeah, those are great. Can I ask, can, can we have them put a date on them?
A date for?
Well, because they're, I assume they're for different weeks or different months. I looked through it, but I couldn't tell what, when the report was for, because it was, there were multiple reports, but there's no date on them.
At the top of page 82, it says the March report.
Says March 2021 code enforcement report.
Right.
On 82, I don't see that. Oh, 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 I see, okay, it's my month. Got it, got it. I just went straight to the detail. Yeah, okay. Perfect, thank you.
I think I managed to include two copies with Mass and Community Code. Alright.
Other? Questions? On any of the reports? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Saviki.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett.
Yeah.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we'll have public comments for items on the agenda, and speakers are limited to three minutes. I don't think we have anybody that's in the attendees, but I could be wrong.
I don't see any attendees.
Okay.
It's got clerk tally. Did we receive any written communications for public comment?
I don't believe so for this meeting. Let me just double check my folder. Uh, no, not for, not for this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I think we don't have a public hearing. And now we'll go to the action requests for consideration. First one up is gonna be the sidewalk ordinance amendment.
So this is the second reading of the ordinance that would allow for the special payment arrangement as opposed to the special assessment process with the multiple hearings for individuals who have the sidewalk costs assessed to their property.
Thank you. Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance to amend Chapter 62, Street Sidewalks in Other Public Places, Section 122 and 123, duty of property owners generally and standards generally.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Saviki.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the sidewalk replacement program regarding tree roots. City manager.
Yes, as we discussed in the study session, that 2021 project area for the residential portion of the sidewalk replacement is the east and west side of Southfield Road, south of 11 Mile I-696. And at the present time, staff is going through that area to update the details associated with those sidewalk flags, including if they are altered because of tree roots. So although the residents have been notified relative to their being responsible for the costs associated with replacement or repair of the sidewalk flags, there has been the issue regarding the tree roots that are impacting some of these sidewalks. And we have included in our contract, we'll be including in the contract, the cost of grinding the tree roots that are uprooting the sidewalks. the cost of grinding the tree roots that are uprooting the sidewalks. And it's estimated cost of about one hundred dollars. We're anticipating based on the information we've received from the engineer that for this section will probably be about a one hundred properties. So that would be a total cost for of ten thousand dollars. So the recommendation to council is that for the twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-three sidewalk program, that the city of Lathua Village assume the costs associated with grinding the roots of the city trees that are impacting safe sidewalk conditions.
Would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the policy and amend the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three sidewalk replacement program to replace that. The city of Lathua Village will assume the costs associated with the grinding of roots of the city trees that are impacting safe sidewalk conditions.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just, just want to reiterate the, the fact that this is something that, that the technically the residents are responsible for paying for, but the, the city is, is kind of stepping up here to, um, since there, there are trees, we own the trees in the right way, and, and they are the ones that are causing the problems. So, so we're going to pick up the cost of grinding those roots down.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
And a reminder that the citizens do remain responsible for the cost of the replacement of the sidewalk flags themselves.
Thank you. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
And Councilmember Sadiqy?
Yes.
Motion carry.
You. Next, we have the adoption of adoption of final delinquent special assessment role. I'm sorry. I did not mean to, I am reading because that's what I do and that's, I feel like Ron Burgundy. I should not read it like that. Is adoption of final delinquent with special assessment role. So, all right, Cheryl.
Just as an explanation with this new program, if I go back after I combined it into one document and I told it I wanted to make edits, it said I was going to delete everything and it was late at night and I knew what would happen if I hit that button. So whatever was a mistake stayed there.
I got you.
Reading like blindly, so I apologize. Okay, I'm so sorry.
Oh, in December, um, at the end of the year, we, um, we have delinquent water and other bills that are unpaid such as for grass and weed mowing and things of that nature and delinquent water bills. So this is part of the process relative to identifying the special assessments. And we had the hearing in January, these that are listed in your packet have remained delinquent. And the total is one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine, which surprisingly is less than in previous years.
Absolutely. I was going to say that the list is shorter also, it seems like.
Yeah, exactly. All right, I'll make a motion, Mayor Burgundy, I mean Mayor Garrett, to adopt the attached resolution as provided for delinquent special assessments.
It's been moved in second. Um, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Sadiqy?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we have the Lathua Village lead service line replacement policy in agreement.
As you recall, with the Michigan Eagle, we are required to verify at least a portion of the residents and within our community and if they have the lead service, water service line. So relative to that, if you recall also that we have contracted through Saquon for the DeAngelo firm to come in and do the actual replacement of the lines. And we've also contracted with Sunday to do the verification of the public private portion of the line and do the replacement of the stop boxes. So it seemed to be more practical to make certain that we have an actual policy in place in case there are any questions and that we can share this information with residents so that they are aware of what the process is. And then relative to the replacement, that there is an actual agreement that is, will be in place so that they understand their responsibilities as well as the responsibilities of the city and the contractor for that water service line replacement. And I want to thank Suzie for putting together the document.
Thanks, Suzie. I'll make a motion to approve the Lathua Village led service line replacement policy in agreement.
Been moved in second. Did, um, is there any discussion? So I'm a little confused from something. Um, don't say that's been all night because I know it has been. Um, this was already sent to residents, right? And we're just now approving it.
Yes.
Is that, am I not, am I missing something right there?
No, it was out of sequence. You, you saw the draft at the earlier study session, but because of timing, we needed to get it in their hands because we need to be contracting very soon to get this stuff done. So we did go ahead and send out the document.
Okay, I was just making sure that I didn't, I didn't miss out on something because I know for a fact that one particular resident has received this already. That.
And encourage them to get it in as soon as possible.
That resident keeps forgetting to sign it and to send it in. That's enough of that. Anyone else have any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just use this as an opportunity to, because we're talking about replacing lead lines, to remind residents that they need to do their internal home self-water line evaluation. That it takes, it requires no technical knowledge. It takes about three minutes to do. It's a very simple process. The directions are on the website.
Hey Bruce, can you do a PSA about it?
Yeah, well, we'll talk about that later.
Yeah, but the process is super slow though, Bruce. I think I did mine a couple of months back. I still really haven't heard anything.
So the, the, the process was really slow. It takes three minutes.
No, no, I mean, doing it is two seconds. Like, get, you know, sending the information on or whatever and getting a response back.
Right, but the city has to respond and it has certain timeframes that they have to respond, respond by. But the issue is, is we need to have people do the, do the test. The directions are on the city website on the front page in the news section. You may have to scroll right or left to find the instructions. Uh, but it will give you step-by-step instructions. And the reason why it's important is because we're required by the state to identify the material where that water line comes into your home and links up with, with, with your water meter. Um, and if you don't do the self-identification process, we have to pay somebody to come into your home and coming into your home during a, a global pandemic is probably not something that you want. Um, plus it's something that residents can do very quickly and very easily and help save the city, city money by, by doing that. So, um, so we really urge people to do that. I think we've had two or three hundred people do it. We've got seventeen hundred that have to do it. Um, so, uh, want to encourage you to, uh, to do that self-identification.
Yep.
And you should have received a letter with the education packet that let you know what your service line material was. But if not, I can double check on it.
Is there any further discussion? So just let me ask you this question for a resident. Um, if the resident's front yard is being torn up and we're, they're doing this in June, they're doing it in June, right?
We're trying to get it scheduled for June, yes.
Stopping their lawn service, they won't get a, a violation if the grass grows long, right? Because they know that the grass is going to be tore up. Right?
I would think they still have to cut their lawn. It's just they won't have to cut, they won't, they want to be able to cut it where the lawn is being torn up until it's repaired by us, but.
Right. I mean, it's anywhere from five to ten feet probably, but the rest of the lawn should be able to be cut.
Yeah.
Yes, and we received the signed agreement with DeAngelo and Saquon today. So as soon as we get all of the agreements in, we can schedule the actual time when they will be out here so that residents can take the appropriate actions for their lawn.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Sadiqy?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next up is Michigan Eagle's third amended administrative consent order.
And if we negotiated the town outlet capacity, the TOC for the sanitary wastewater that can be discharged at the three point three five cubic feet per second. And we also anticipate that we'll be working with Oakland County for the flow capacity agreement in the near future. I had another Zoom meeting with them today in regards to that. So the submitting, the city submitted a long-term corrective action plan to Eagle for review and approval on April seventh. And by September first of next year, the city is to submit a work plan with implementation schedule. So what you have before you is a request to approve the third amended administrative consent order from the state of Michigan.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the third amendment administrative consent order from the state of Michigan Department of Environmental Great Lakes and Energy Water Resources Division and authorize the city administrator to sign the order and related documents. Second.
Been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Sadiqy?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Next will be the city of Lathua Village twenty-twenty consumer annual report on water quality.
This is the annual report that the state requires us to conduct and to post and share with our residents. The twenty-twenty report shows the sources of our water, lists the results of our tests. It contains important information about water and health. We meet all of the standards that are required. A copy of the report is posted and available outside of City Hall on the board as well as on the website. And links to the report have been shared with residents on the water bill, these newsletter newsletters and on social media.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the city of Lathua Village twenty-twenty consumers annual report on water quality and instruct the city clerk to forward a copy of the report to state, to the state of Michigan, DEQ, Saquon and Oakland County Health Department, along with the certificate of distribution as required under the state on the law of Michigan. Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilman, and Councilmember Sadiqy?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we have a recommendation.
Yeah, for the roads. I can, I can introduce this one, Kelly.
Good.
Yeah, so, so this is, this is a, a recommendation for the road construction project for twenty-twenty-two, so not this summer, but next summer. May seem a little bit early, but the engineering that has to take place for twenty-twenty-two summer project really needs to start beginning this, this summer and be done before the, the snows hit. So the, the road recommendation that was adopted by, um, uh, city council requires that the, the infrastructure committee make a recommendation of roads and, uh, then forward it to council for approval. We recommended two point two four miles of road for the twenty-twenty-two construction season. I'll just list them out real quickly so, so residents will know what they are. It's basically La Crosse from, from Bloomfield to Santa Barbara, Glenwood from Santa Barbara to Bloomfield, Saratoga from Bloomfield to Sunset, Cambridge from Santa Barbara to Bloomfield, San Rosa from Southfield Road to the city line, Wiltshire from Southfield Road to the city line, East California from Southfield Road to Southfield Road, Lathua Boulevard from Southfield Road to Coral, Coral Gables, Rainbow Court from Rainbow Drive to Rainbow Court, Eldorado Place from Middlesex to Rainbow Drive, um, and then Cambridge from Southfield Road to Lathua Boulevard. That, that last one being contingent upon those residents approving a, a special assessment for their, um, for, for their, for their ditch work. Uh, as far as how those roads were, were selected and basically to eliminate any bias, um, we have the city engineer and the project engineer make the initial recommendation, which they did based upon engineering concerns, minimizing disruption and keeping costs low. And their, their methodology for this particular construction season was, was picking mostly one A full reconstruction roads. And the, the idea behind that was by grouping together, one A construction is the full reconstruction. It's the most expensive, most intensive form of, of reconstruction of, of the three different possible types that will, will be undergoing during the three, three years. And they felt that by doing most of the, the full one A reconstruction together in the same year, based on the volume that we would have, we would end up saving the city a, a large amount of money due to economies of scale. So they grouped those together for, for their recommendation. One of the, one of those roads was south of, of six ninety-six and there were only two other roads, uh, south of six ninety-six that were on the eligible list. So they also recommended doing those two roads at the same time because that will reduce, uh, save the city money by not having to mobilize successive, uh, successive summers to do those roads by doing them all at once. Um, also, two of the streets on the list are having their water mains replaced this year, uh, this summer. And so those roads will, will need to be, uh, reconstructed the, the following year. Uh, other factors that were included were also the fact that CMS Energy is going to be doing a, a line replacement project on the east side of Southfield Road between eleven and twelve mile. So they wanted to get most of the really, really intense construction out of the way this year so it's not in the way next year with conflicting with that project. Um, and then they also did not, uh, select any adjacent streets because there's going to be parking issues for some of those residents. And if we had adjacent streets, it would dramatically increase the, uh, the walk that those people would have to go back and forth to their homes while the construction is, is, is occurring. So, um, so those are, those are the recommendations for twenty-twenty-two summer.
Thank you. Um, and no motion needs to be taken on the recommendations. Those are simply recommendations, correct? Um, next, the request for proposals for professional auditing services.
Also have requested a RFP issued relative to our accounting services. And you've seen the draft a couple of times. So this is the final draft before you and we will issue this tomorrow and hopefully get the responses by June first so that the contract can be ready to commence on July first.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to authorize the release of the RFP for professional auditing services. Second.
Been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Sadiqy?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, um, we have the consideration for approval of the fund balance and reserve policy.
And I have to get to that. Hold on. This was also discussed at a previous study session and in regards to the best practices that are recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association and GASP. It recommends that you have a designation relative to your fund balance and a reserve policy. So the identified categories are included in your packet, non-spendable fund, restricted fund, committed, assigned fund and unassigned fund. And to also adopt the, um, relative to the unrestricted fund balance, that it be a fifteen to twenty-five, fifteen to twenty percent percentage of the expenditures, which we have been maintaining anyway, but to formalize it in a, in a policy.
Gotcha.
So I'll make a motion, sorry, I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt the fund balance and reserve policy as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Roll call. Councilmember Saviki?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, the next one, we have the Oakland County West Now Virus Fund Program for twenty twenty-one.
This is the annual program that we've been participating in with Oakland County and they provide us with five hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-three cents as a reimburse, as a reimbursement for qualifying expenses, mostly we have used it for um lotions and sprays to keep away mosquitoes, especially for the outdoor concerts and events. So this is a, we're asking for you to adopt the resolution to approve our participation in the um program.
Let's motion to adopt a resolution to approve participation in the Oakland County West Now Virus Fund Reimbursement Program for two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Roll call, Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Saviki?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Um, and then next, it is the um proclamation um to celebrate Arbor Day, um, which will be on April twenty-fourth. And um it's already, oh, it's already signed. So, uh, this will be April twenty-fourth and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Um, and I further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Does any, I think we're having our Arbor Day program?
On Saturday, and we received our sticker.
Right.
Today. And a flag, so.
No sapling giveaways?
Not this year.
Okay.
You're in charge of the committee to get those.
Okay.
And then last, it looks like I have the city manager report.
Okay. So I, I think the main thing that you really want to talk about today is in regards to the, the water bills. And what we've been experiencing, one, um, we, the person who handles the water bills as well as um posting the payments have been, they've moved on to another position with another company. So that position has been vacant for, I think it's about two months now. And we've been trying to spread the responsibilities around while we have the position posted. But um one, I want to let residents know that it's probably going to take a little longer than normal to get the responses and to please be patient with us, but we will respond. Also, there's been ongoing issues relative to um just the billing and the water meters themselves. As you know, the water meters have been somewhat inconsistent in their, uh, in what information that they're sharing with us. So I, I also want to reemphasize that it's very important if you get a, a communication that's been sent out, Pam sent out, I think about thirty of them uh relative to the water bills uh not issuing the, either any information or what seems to be inconsistent information that we were able to have this um team go out there and either rewire or at least um look at the meter to see if there's an issue and if it needs to be replaced. Also, I want to note that um we are working very actively on correcting any past issues. One of the things that we did notice is that there were a number of bills that have been estimated for many months. And we're trying to get the actual readings on these water meters. That means that there will be an adjustment on bills, some bills will um actually owe and some will actually have a credit depending on what their circumstances are. The minimal bill is for four units each month, that's about fifty-four dollars a month. Um, the bills can fluctuate it for a number of reasons, one is how you're using it, especially in the summer. Um, if you're watering the grass, I also noticed that around holidays, they go up around Easter and Christmas. So I'm assuming that people have visitors in their homes as well as um again, having the multiple um estimates on your bill. The water rates themselves are only adjusted in July after the council approves the budget as well as adopts the water rates. So that's the only time the actual bill will adjust. But one of the main things that people may have noticed, a, a large discrepancy between the February bill and the March bill. And I lost my note, Pam, I said how many days?
Actually, it's the March and April bill.
March, March and April bill. And the March bill was twenty-two days.
Correct.
And the April bill, is that thirty-five days?
Thirty-five, I think.
Yes, okay.
I think I lost it too.
So that was one of the reasons that the bills made it seem a little dissimilar, it's not just the same thirty days each month that is a, a billing cycle, so sometimes they will fluctuate based on the number of days that are included. And again, the capital bond surcharge, which we estimated at approximately ten dollars, it will not go into effect until July with the billing in July. But for anyone who does think that they have an issue relative to their water bill or they think something is irregular, um, to please contact us in the office, you can do it by phone or email or stopping in. Uh, we may not get to you that day, but we will get to you as soon as we can, um, give us a couple of days to look into it and get back with you.
Cheryl, I also want to let people know that we are only sending our readers out for rereads three times a week because they're going out every day and it's just taking them away from other things. So we're setting up that they are only going out Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. So if you ask for a reread, you might not get it the day you asked for it, it's going to be scheduled for the next time they go out to reread.
And the other thing I want to mention, um, we're getting a number of calls coming in in regards to the tree branches on Friday for the chipping. And it typically happens at the beginning of the season, they have more um branches than they can handle in just one cycle of the city. Um, they have not yet determined if they're going to either be coming in overtime or just starting where they missed on the next cycle, but we'll be working through that with the company.
Yeah, the one thing I've noticed Cheryl, in my walks around the city, is that a lot of people um prepared their branches to be picked up, you know, prior to branch pickup starting. And a lot of them left them in their ditches so that the ends of the, the branches aren't, you know, the, the, aren't facing the street and they won't pick them up if they're not facing the street. So if you did put your, your branches temporarily in the ditch, make sure that you reorganize them so that the, the cut ends are towards the street so that the uh chipper, chippers will pick them up.
And that's a good reminder, and I, I will remind um Melody because she's um new at the front desk that as people call in to make certain that they are placing their branches in the proper formation. That's all I have.
Thank you. City attorney?
Nope.
Anything from reports, or excuse me, boards, commissions or committees?
I just want to mention that the planning commission is meeting tomorrow and they will have the um the ordinance in regards to the zoning ordinance on the materials, building materials as well as a discussion on the cannabis.
Thank you. Any unfinished or new business? Any public comment?
No ones here.
Any council comment?
Yeah, I just, just want to make a couple of common, infrastructure-related comments, just um, we, we did uh, we started uh creating um uh public service announcements uh regarding the, the road project and all the infrastructure projects going on because there are a lot of them and it's going to be a little bit confusing for the residents uh knowing what's happening at what time. So um, we're, we're, we're doing a series of public uh service announcements. We did the first one uh last week, it's out and a variety of places, you can find it on the city website. If you go to the homepage and then up on the top on the menu, click on residents and then scroll down and click on infrastructure. Um, and on that infrastructure page, there will be a link to the first public service announcement which basically goes over all of the projects that are about to start, what they are, why we're doing them. Um, and then talks about any uh inconveniences that uh residents uh may incur because of those projects and how we and they can, can mitigate the uh, the inconvenience. Um, so I, I strongly suggest that people go out there and, and, and watch the public service announcement. Um, also, uh, the infrastructure page is also another place uh that has a wealth of information, more detailed uh than I talk about in the public service announcement. Uh, is, is more detailed information is found on that, on that infrastructure webpage uh about all the projects that we're doing and I don't think it's there yet, but it will be soon. Um, we'll have an interactive uh, uh map where residents can click on their home or anybody's home or any property within the city. Uh, and they'll be able to see all of the various projects that are going on uh near that property and what the schedule is when, when they'll, when those projects will occur. Um, so that will really help you to navigate uh both literally and figuratively uh around uh, around these, these, these projects. Um, you may have seen work already starting, especially on some of those roads that are going to be reconstructed uh this summer. Uh, because there's a lot of prep work that we need to, need to get out of the way so it doesn't conflict with um uh the actual road construction, so for example, replacing gate valves and fire hydrants and so forth, that, that work has already started. Um, the road work will, will uh start, the project will start uh around May third. Um, and, and again, I mentioned this earlier as part of the water and lead line replacements, but uh do your self-identification, uh go to the homepage of the website and in the news section, uh, uh follow the directions there to uh identify what kind of material you have inside of your home on, on, near your water meter. So uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, anyone else? Hearing none, um, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, second.
Well, have a good night and we will talk soon.
Thank you, everybody. Hi everyone, stay safe.
Hi everyone.
Bye now.